Good evening. We called our meeting into order during our closed executive session, and now we can begin the public portion of our meeting. Also wanted to wish everyone, well, not everyone, Happy Lunar New Year to those who are celebrating. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Aderhold.
Good evening, everybody. As we start our second meeting of the year, I just want to take a moment of pause. Earlier this week, the district messaged the tragic loss of one of our colleagues. And so I just wanted to spend a moment talking about the passing of Mr. Arthur Stubbs. Art was a dedicated educator and coach in WWP and at High School North for the past 23 years. He was involved in a sudden and unexpected medical incident back on the 13th, and he passed away from complications this past weekend. Our condolences go out to Art's family, his friends, his colleagues, and his students. And I want to send a special extension of condolences to his children, Morgan and Art Jr. As I said, he was a P teacher and coach for numerous athletic teams, both at North and CMS. He supported our students and their development in the weight room. He was beloved by his colleagues and by his students alike. Had the opportunity to spend yesterday at High School North, working with staff and working with students. And there is no doubt that Mr. Stubbs left an indelible mark on that school community. He was a friend, he was an advocate, he was a coach, and a mentor and friend to so many. Whether it was a veteran staff or second-year teacher, his impact was evident while being there. His students talked glowingly and wrote beautiful notes and letters about him yesterday in thinking and remembrance. So in that end, I just want to send our thanks to Art's family for sharing him with us for these past 23 years. Want to remind our families that if your children need support, to please reach out to our school administration and our counselors. We've made information and support for families available on the district website. And while we are off tomorrow for our students and our staff with the celebration of Lunar New Year, we also recognize that services, both Wednesday night and Thursday, will be ongoing, and we'll continue to support the North community during this sad time. So I'm going to leave my public comments just to that in memory and thanks to Mr. Stubbs and his family. Thank you.
Thank you for those words, Dr. Aderhold. We'll now move on to the 2023-2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Mr. McClellan?
I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to present the results of the 2024 audit. I did a little something different this year. I handed, I sent over a package which includes about a seven or eight-page presentation, just to summarize some of the highlights of the audit and talk more about what we do during the audit process, because they're really your financial statements. We just take a look at what you do and put an opinion on the financial statements. The state moved the report deadline to January 15th this year. Your report was filed on time, so there's no issue with that, just compared to where we were last year, or even this year. On January 15th, at the end of the day, there were still 25% of the audits in the state that were still not filed. You are not one of those. Last Tuesday night, I met with the Finance Committee and the administration to go over the numbers in detail. And again, I'm just going to go over high level and then, of course, answer any questions you may have. Before I get started with some of the specifics, I want to thank Dr. Aderhold, Chris, Bonnie, Derek, and the team up in the administrative office, because we ask for a lot of information, whether it be vouchers, payroll information, student information, so forth. They're very, very good at getting us the information we need in order to get us to the point where we're able to complete the audit. I also want to recognize the board as well as the school district for 16 consecutive years of receiving the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. That's given out by International ASBO, International Association of School Business Officials, which is a review of your audit report and your financial statements done by someone that does not live in the state, it's a CPA, and then they render a decision every year as to whether you qualify or not. You're one of about 30 districts in the state of New Jersey that receives that out of the 600-plus that exist. So when we do the audit, we just, we touch on a lot of different areas. We touch on the general and school administrative areas. We touch on instructional areas, student services, cafeteria, your capital improvements, your debt service. There's a lot of areas we touch on. Transportation, we're looking at your DRTRS, which is your Transportated Students Report. We look at the ASSA, which is your application for state school aid, which compares the number of students that are reported to the state versus the number of students you have on record as of October 15th of every year. So it's a very, very all-encompassing audit. We meet with a lot of different people in a lot of different departments. It's not just Chris's department where we're sitting in the office and doing the work. So throughout the course of the audit, we look at your internal controls over payroll. We look at your cash disbursements and purchasing. We look at your cash receipts and revenue. And we perform testing to make sure that the controls in place are there to prevent or detect anything from going wrong. And at the end of the day, the district provides us with a set of financial records that we have to audit. And we have to basically look at that information and render an opinion on those financial statements as to whether it's a clean audit or not. And I'm happy to report that the audit report this year, as it has been in the past years that I can remember, it's a clean audit, meaning the information provided was materially accurate, and the information presented can be relied upon, it's in the financial report. We also follow standards of government auditing standards, where we have to look at certain internal controls, as well as compliance in accordance with government standards. And then we also, as part of a governmental entity, we have to perform audits of your various grants, whether they be federal or state grants that we have to look at on an annual basis, on a rotational basis. In the actual Annual Comprehensive Financial Report that I hope, I think you've received, if not, I'm sure you have electronic copy, there's four sections to that. The introductory section is really your section. It gives you, as a district, the opportunity to praise what you've done internally from a board perspective, highlights accomplishments and so forth. The financial section is where all the numbers are. The statistical sections are towards the end, which are 20 different schedules that show kind of how you compare year to year for the last 10 years, whether it be from a tax perspective and so forth. And then the last section deals with your federal and state grants, called the single audit section. So what are the results? Again, I mentioned it's an unmodified opinion. The district continues to be in very, very good financial position and continually and prudently puts funds aside in various reserves, whether it be for capital, maintenance, and emergency reserves, all within the statutory requirements and legally restricted thresholds. From an internal control perspective, there were no control exceptions identified, no material weaknesses, and no significant deficiencies. And from our audit of the grants, we looked at, from a federal perspective, the child nutrition program this year, as well as the ACERS program. And from a state perspective, we look at the overall formulae grants, as well as debt service aid, which are different from what we looked at last year, all of which we didn't identify any items of noncompliance. And we also rendered a clean opinion on those financial statements, on those grants as well. From a management report perspective, there were no findings that will require corrective action this year. And again, I just want to summarize by saying a very, very clean audit, and again, giving credit to the administration for their work and efforts throughout the year. It's a full-year process, and then it's a several-week process of getting the financial statements together and performing the audit. So Chris and his team do a great job, and it's a pleasure to do work here, because we expect nothing less than great financial records, which makes it easier for us to audit. So with that, I'd like you to turn it over to, back to the board if you have any questions. Thank you. I'm going to make sure I don't take yours.
Thank you for that presentation. Do we have any questions from the board? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott.
And now, Dr. Rousseau will do our 2025-26 budget presentation.
Now for the good stuff. So yeah, this is the first of several presentations. We'll start to do this monthly as we move towards a final budget. So, you know, every budget's put together with the ethos of the community and the concepts of the administration and the board, you know, with pretty much every step we take, and it is. So, you know, we start with the strategic goals. We, you know, we've read those many times. You'll see those with each of the budget presentations. And then you have, you know, we understand that all students have diverse needs and backgrounds. We embrace a rapidly changing world. We recognize the students that need to balance social and emotional needs, and we want to cultivate diverse and inclusive community. So all of our financial decisions and planning decisions take those goals into mind. What's a school budget? It's about our priorities for our students. It's about money. Schools operate in a fiscal calendar from July 1 through June 30. The meat and potatoes of the budget are put together from December to February. There's two simple rules. The tax revenue must be within cap, so there are caps on the money that we're allowed to raise in local tax revenue, and the revenues must equal expenses. There has to be balanced. School budget's a planning tool. It considers contingencies. It manages risk. Must be fiscally responsible. It's a reflection of our values, and the budget must consider safeguards and buffers. So what's the process? Pretty much, I'll say, when we approve this on April 29th, the next day, we'll be talking about the successive year's budget. But it pretty much summer, fall, Finance Committee starts discussions. A&amp;F Committee, you know, starts discussing capital project needs. Curriculum Committee starts discussing program of studies needs. December, we have a BOE retreat to see where we are at that point. Mid-year budget review happens at the county office. The county office reviews where we are with this budget, what our anticipated needs are for next year. We kind of get an update from the county, what the state is saying, you know, regarding the subsequent year's budget. November to February, we meet with the budget managers. Right now, Derek, my assistant, and sometimes me, and, you know, sometimes Dave, and, well, Dave, Derek, and I meet all the time, but people come to either the three of us and share different needs as we realize that they have brought something up to us. We'll meet with them, and then we'll share with the other two. January through March, right now, BOE, public budget discussions. Late February, the Governor's Address will be the last Tuesday of the month. State aid numbers will be out the last Thursday of the month. Last I heard, they're still on schedule for that this year. March 18th is when the board will take action to adopt the budget, and we'll file it by March 20th, which is a statutory date. April 29th will be the public hearing for the final adoption of the budget for the 25-26 year. We've received a Certificate of Excellence from ASBO International for the 16 consecutive years, and a Meritorious Budget Award for eight consecutive years. A Certificate of Excellence, Derek does a lot of work on it. It's based on the audit, you know, with the audit findings. And I say that in a positive way, because there are no audit findings based on the results of the audit. Meritorious Budget Award is based on our budget that we put together. Where's the money come from? Comes from local taxes, state aid, federal aid, grants, interest, tuition, budgeted surplus, and reserve withdrawals. Important points on revenue. Appropriations, i.e. the expenses, can change during the year. The revenues do not. We can't ask for more money. We have to spend within the areas, within the revenue that we can raise during the year. There's a budget cap. We can only increase tax levy year over year by 2%. There are spending growth limitation adjustments for healthcare, for certain pieces of healthcare, and for student increases more than 10% year over year. The district has an additional taxing authority to collect debt service separate from the general fund. That is something we have not chosen to do. We collect our debt service within the general fund collection. Where does the revenue go? I love this slide. I usually do it on my hand. For other people, I only name five things, and then I get to supplies and textbooks. Notice supplies and textbooks have an asterisk. Why is it that far down, and why does it have an asterisk? Because you have to pay for the salaries and benefits. You have to pay for healthcare. You have to pay for utilities, repair and maintenance, professional services, technology and transportation, tuitions, support services, special education. Then you can get to supplies, textbooks, and materials. That's the only discretionary piece of a school budget, and it's typically maybe 2% to 5% of the total budget. Then you have capital projects. That's for improving our facilities. Cost drivers. We have salaries. We have to file a negotiated agreement. Healthcare. We were self-employed, self-funded health insurance for four years. Yeah, four years, I think it was. The reason it was three, yeah, because it's mid-year. I'm confused with three and a half or four. It was four years. We received a couple catastrophic claims, high usage, and with the weight loss, the Ozempics and these sort of drugs, we saw that our renewals for our reinsurance was going to come in somewhere in the 17% to 30% range. So we realized that was not sustainable anymore. We were able to enter the school's health insurance fund, and we negotiated with a 2.6%, like, safety margin, a 10.6% increase for the first year. So healthcare's going up by that much. We did realize today that we had 43 new enrollees in our healthcare. Just information that we just found out, either, you know, coming off of waivers or aging out at the 26-year-old. So you'll see numbers later. They'll have to be adjusted up when all the calculations are done. Transportation, we're coming off of two years of very high inflation. We're anticipating a 4% increase based on the calculation that we do, which is close to a really strong guess. But there, it's 4%, estimated 4% on an already inflated number, if that makes sense. Transportation's gone from around $10 million to almost, essentially $19 million in the last three years. Facilities, going out for RFP for cleaning services. This, again, is going to be an inflation, an inflated number based on recent inflationary issues. No doubt that a company coming in, or whether the company that is in currently, will try to put together an RFP that will meet their actual needs. That's a five-year contract, two years with three renewals, and our concern is that number's going to go up about 10% over current. Insurance increases as a result of natural disasters, theft, COVID, and cybersecurity. Special education, we have staff increases due to increase in special needs population, not only entering the district, but bringing our students back from out-of-district placements, and possible, and we're also concerned with special reduction in federal funding. Tuitions, out-of-district providers, private out-of-district providers do not have to follow the 2% tax levy cap. So we have been noticed by several of them already that the increases on our tuitions will be more than 10% instead of anywhere near 2%. Instruction, we have tech platforms, you know, that obviously through COVID, we ended up bringing a bunch of new tech platforms, and we're sorting through them, what is efficient, what's actually working, what's not, and our subscriptions. We have language arts and math standards review. We have to review that, and therefore, we're going to have different resources to get us compliant to where we need to be. The original OG training, DLI training, MTSS intervention, Orton-Gillingham training is OG, DLI, Dual Language Immersion Training, MTSS, multiple tiers of intervention, strategic goals, and responsive classroom are all the platforms now that will, you know, will be looking at the costs, and we're trying to, we're not negotiating as with someone. We're figuring out what they are, because they are the programs that we want to move forward with. So this number's huge. This is our gap right now between revenues and appropriations. This number's actually, let me make sure, I feel like I jumped over something. No, I didn't. I'm there. This number's actually higher than it is right now, but we weren't going to play with numbers and make them confusing. So the shortage between revenue and appropriations right now is $8.9 million. You see the ABM custodial, you know, we assume that's going to be 687,000. That's an increase. Healthcare would be about $3.1 million increase, but based on the information we got right before the close of day today, that number's going to be four. Insurance, you know, transportation, you know, we'll see that might go down a little bit. Buildings and grounds will stay there. PERS will probably go up a little higher than what we have there. Technology might go down a little bit. Special Ed will be right in that area. Energy's a wash, no increase, and that's because of our ESIP and our energy, prior energy-saving programs. Clubs and activities, the contractual stipends and rates changed. That was, that change was not budgeted in this current year, so we have to budget it in this year. So right now, we're trying to make up a shortfall of revenue of about $8.9 million. That's a topic that we'll see in February, once we receive our state aid, and we can actually dig into that number. Capital projects. One thing that's great here, we try to keep our facilities looking good and being efficient and safe. Roof replacement at Town Center, we're waiting on, hopefully, a rod grant. You know, we put in for a rod grant, this is last year, a full year ago. There was essentially, the download, there was a mix-up in the download from our architect, so we did not get the first round. We're hoping, and we've spoken to the people in charge at, you know, at the school facilities office, and said that essentially, our roof project would have been in a Tier 1 program, and it was not because of the submittal. There was a mistake in the submittal. We should have been allowed to remedy that. The state did not allow us to remedy that. It is in their own bylaws and their own procedures that it can be remedied. They did not allow us to remedy it. Purchase pathways, 72 Grover's Mill. It's the first year, we have two years, fourth and fifth year. This is the fourth year we can actually purchase it. Robotics room electric, this is to split some of the circuits in that room. High School North Theater, seating and flooring. We worked on the light, the lights this year, meaning the stage lighting this year. We're going to work on the seating and flooring in next year's budget. High School North, various projects, and this is in the culinary arts lab to improve it. We want to do electrical upgrade. We want to do culinary, we want to do hot water, a separate standalone hot water system for that, and then the PA for the entire building. Electrical upgrade for the culinary room is to plug in separate items along the outside wall on the countertops for more home-style kind of instruction. You know, just for the sake of little, you know, little pieces. But anyway, high school auditorium technology upgrade, GMS four-year upgrade, ESIP II contribution, which may or may not, will stay in the budget, but we may be lucky enough when all the dust settles on the calculation that won't be needed. But we do have to budget it, because if not, we would not be able to go forward. And Dutch Neck HVAC for an improvement in an area that's lacking right now. That's the meat and potatoes of budget. Some exciting, I call it exciting news. It means more work, but it's exciting. ESIP II. So, and ESIP has an investment-grade audit. So the investment, the first investment-grade audit was done five years ago, and that's to see the projects in which, in the area, in the district, in which we could improve through ESCOs, I mean ESCOs, through ECMs, energy conservation measures. And so we have that audit. When we did the first ESIP, we were not able to include all of those energy conservation measures in the savings. We could not save enough to pay for them, if that's the short version. So we're allowed to take another bite of that apple, you know, in this ESIP II. The funding mechanism for the ESIP II are the solar carports that will produce, you know, that will reduce our electricity usage, you know, for the, off the grid. And it will, that will produce enough savings for a complete new HVAC system in the Morris Hawk Elementary School. New gym, there's four units in the gym at Grover. New boilers at Village, a new heat pump at High School North, and integrate more of the HVAC equipment onto one control system. The financing project, the firm doing, Schneider, who's handling our, who's handling the process, not the company doing the solar carport, but the company helping us with the energy savings improvement project, is putting 1.1 million in their corporate tax savings from the first project, donating it back to the district for the second project, and then we're budgeting a half million dollars local share. When this is done, 71% of the district electric supply will be supplied locally. Three to four schools will be at roughly net zero electric usage. Little sidebar, I have to go there. We wanted to do this parking lot. The utility company wouldn't allow us to do it. We wanted to do Grover. Utility company would not allow us to do it because of the grid, stress on the grid. Town Center roof, same thing. Had we, were we able to do them, seven of our schools would be at net zero electric usage. So we're not going to be able to get to that until, you know, the grid is enhanced, but there's no reason to not do what we can do. Questions? This is the first presentation. There'll, you know, be several more, and then obviously, March 18th is the big night.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you so much for that presentation. Do we have any questions from board members? Okay. Thank you so much. Now we're going to, the board, now will be the first opportunity for public comment. The Board invites thoughts and reactions on agenda items and items of concern from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 60 minutes. Do we have any public comments?
Anuragavlesh, resident of Nine Chestnut Court, West Windsor. Good evening, members of the Board and school administration, and everybody else. On November 25th, 2024, an allegation was made against a lunch aide at the Dutch Neck Elementary School regarding inappropriate student contact during lunch. The aide was immediately suspended pending a district investigation. On December 4th, the investigator from the state of New Jersey's Institutional Abuse Investigation Unit conducted a thorough inquiry, concluding that the allegation was unfounded. Specifically, the report stated that the child was not abused or neglected, and the child was neither harmed or placed at the risk of harm. Subsequently, on 10th of January 2025, the lunch aide met up with Mr. Duncan and Dr. Aderhold, expecting a fair discussion to provide context and respond to questions. Instead, what happened was far from a fair discussion. He was shown a video clip of the incident and informed of the intent to terminate him because his conduct was inappropriate and unacceptable. He did not get a chance to present the context in which the incident happened. He came out of the meeting with tears in his eyes. For the past 10 weeks, this ordeal has been an immense source of stress for this 78-year-old lunch aide, who happens to be my father. At this point, I speak not to contest his termination, but to highlight the lack of due and fair process. He was not given a fair chance to access the fundamental details of any investigation, such as even the complaint, any investigation details, or the final investigation report. Additionally, as English was not his primary language, he requested my language, he requested my presence to support an effective communication, which was denied. At this point, I seek answers to three questions. First, what policy document of the school district outlines the process for such investigations, particularly when the state findings deem the allegations unfounded? Second, what policy document of the school district, sorry, second, how does the district define inappropriate student contact, specifically when a child is not abused or neglected, and the child is neither harmed nor placed at the risk of harm? Caregivers and staff sometimes make physical contact with students to ensure the safety of these students, sometimes to perform their own duties effectively, and sometimes for their own safety. It is crucial that such interactions are evaluated fairly and with context. My third question therefore is, in this incident, how was the context of the incident understood, and how was the understanding of the context used to determine it as inappropriate? Thanks so much. I conclude.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Dan Weiss, fifteen Canoe Brook Drive in West Windsor. I really just came here to introduce myself. For those who don't know me, I am a councilman here in West Windsor Township. I just started the second year of my first term, and in our reorganization meeting earlier this month, I was appointed as the council liaison towards the Board of Ed. So I just wanted to really just introduce myself. I know some of you, but not all of you, and I'm going to apologize in advance if I don't remember names. One of the skills that I'm still learning is matching names and faces. So if I ask you to reintroduce yourself, please don't be offended by that. I plan to participate and attend all your meetings, and I'm happy to help out wherever I can. My door is always open. You can call me, email me. And I'm also very much willing to participate in any subcommittees or wherever my services can be used. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the first opportunity for public comment.
Thank you, Councilman, for your introduction tonight, and welcome. I'm not going to go too far in response, as it's a personnel matter in front of the Board of Education this evening. I'll simply speak to process. Any investigation that's conducted is conducted lawfully and appropriately, in compliance with the law set forward by the state of New Jersey. In general, when an allegation comes forward, if an allegation is, impacts a student, the school district, the administration, has a responsibility to notify two agencies. One is the law enforcement. Second is DCPMP, Division of Children Protection and Permanency. DCPMP determines if they are going to accept and review a matter. In any case, when that happens, an individual, the district has to make a determination whether individuals stay on grounds or not, depending as a result of the fact pattern in front of us. If DCPMP has a finding, has to meet a certain definition by their definitions, their definitions differ than district definitions. So a conduct could be such that the district finds something inappropriate, that DCPMP does not find the standard of, in their terms, abuse that would lead to potentially criminal charges. That does not mean that every action by an individual that results in a referral to DCPMP is an appropriate action for a staff member to take with a child, a five-year-old. And so things that we might be looking for might be video that shows restraint, shows marks, shows nurse's record of injury. You could have a student injured in which DCPMP determines that there is not a finding of abuse, but that does not mean that the student wasn't injured by an individual, and doesn't mean that the district would condone such actions. So hypothetically, if a student was harmed, marked, injured, restrained, inappropriately, it doesn't mean they would be found to be criminally liable for set injury, to the point of being charged by the police, or found to be an abuser by DCPMP, but it doesn't mean that WWP has to employ such individual. So any such allegations that the district doesn't file due process of law would be wholly inappropriate by any individual that may come up to a podium with lack of fact pattern. Furthermore, if an individual is involved in an employment matter, they have right to representation. That representation is through their association, assuming they are dues-paying member to such association. What they don't have is an unfettered right to bring anyone they want for whatever reason they want, whether related or unrelated. Further, if a student, a staff member involved in an incident has requests for translation services, they would need to make such requests in writing, to which there may or may not be any such record, or, and I'll say in this case, no record, of such requests for an employee that was employed for numerous years in district and never once requested translation at any point ever. So I'll stop there. So what's in front of the board stands. As a recommendation from the administration.
Thank you, Dr. Idol. We're going to now move on to the Board of Ed Committee reports. We're going to start with the Administration and Facilities Committee. Dana?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The Administration and Facilities Committee met on Tuesday, January twenty-first. The first item we discussed was on, was several policies and regulations. For first readings, we discussed policy and regulation nine three two zero, which is cooperation with law enforcement agencies. Next, we, for first reading, we discussed policy and regulation seven four four one, electronic surveillance in school buildings and on school grounds. And then the next one was policy five five three three, student smoking and its accompanying regulation. For a second reading, we reviewed the updated school facilities use policy and regulation, which is seven five one zero, and Dr. McDonald presented to the committee costs incurred by the district and rules about district facility use by community groups and local organizations. The committee reviewed this policy and its accompanying regulation and recommends them for a second reading and approval at tonight's meeting. As for a referendum update, the Media Center projects at Morris Hawk and Village Elementary Schools are complete. For athletics, winter sports are well underway, with many students and teams doing very well. Highlights include High School North Boys Basketball Team, who, I don't know, they have a game right now, so maybe they, I don't know what the result is, who, before that game, are fourteen and three on the year, while the Girls' Winter Track captured the Group Three State Championship in the distance medley relay. And we wanted to congratulate High School South Coach Jessica Bidwell on her two-hundredth win, a hundred for boys swimming, and a hundred for girls. Spring high school sports registration is now open through February twenty-six. High school student athletes can choose to participate in several spring, or many spring sports: Girls' and Boys' Golf, Girls' and Boys' Lacrosse, Girls' and Boys' Spring Track and Field, Boys' Volleyball, Boys' Tennis, Baseball Cricket, which is a co-ed program, and Softball, which is a co-op with North, between North and South. The committee discussed an update to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six academic calendar, and several proposed drafts for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven academic calendars. The committee recommends amending the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six calendar to include fall middle school conference dates. Additional stakeholder feedback will be reviewed before approval of the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven calendar is considered by the Board of Education. We next discussed a proposed list of committee meetings for the year, and we will next meet on Wednesday, February twelfth.
Thank you, Dana. Do we have any questions? Now, we'll have the Curriculum Committee report. Loy?
Thank you, Puja. The Curriculum Committee met on January twenty-first. We began with several presentations. I'll just list them right now. First, we had a presentation by Michael Cotelli, and he was presenting his dissertation topic, which is "From the Superintendent's Seat to Classroom Worksheets," and his research dissertation centers around civics education. The committee engaged Mr. Cotelli in a discussion. Next, we had Mr. Kevin Lynch, who presented a case study analyzing stakeholder perceptions of primary stressors for incoming middle school students in a diverse suburban school district. And he presented his doctoral dissertation research around stakeholder perception of student stressors during that transition between elementary and middle school. And third, Shanaaz Ahmed, hers was titled "Math Anxiety in High School Students: A Survey Study of Students' Opinions and Feelings About Mathematics." And when she presented her dissertation research about learning more about students' feelings regarding learning mathematics in an effort to incorporate strategies in the classroom to further support student learning. We also discussed the District Professional Development Day. The district's PD Day is on February fourteenth, and will provide educators an opportunity for professional learning around a variety of topics aligned with the district's strategic goals. Sessions will be facilitated by teacher leaders, administrators, and a few external guest speakers, which I'll mention a few later. All are looking forward to a great day of inspired learning. Next, on the agenda are items for voting tonight. First, the Curriculum Committee recommends approval of the Community Education Spring/Summer Two Thousand Twenty-Five Youth and Adult Programs, which are listed on tonight's agenda. Next, Professional Development Consultants, we recommend the following, approval of the following. First, Child Mind Institute to provide a ninety-minute selective neetism and anxiety disorders professional development workshop to district staff on February fourteenth at a cost not to exceed twenty-five hundred, and that would be paid through Title IV grant funds. We have Noreen Nacim Rodriguez to provide a full-day education for Equity Integrating Asian American and Pacific Islander Voices Professional Development Workshop to district leaders on, in February thirteenth, at a cost not to exceed fifteen hundred, fourteen. Next, Friday True Heart Consultants to provide a half-day African American History Professional Development Workshop to district teachers on April second, at a cost not to exceed a thousand dollars, and that will be paid through the AP AASA grant funds that were received. Next, Don't Diet Dieticians LLC to provide a one-hour "What's Eating Our Students and What to Do About It? Let's Untangle Food and Feelings Professional Development Workshop" to district teachers on the fourteenth of February, at a cost not to exceed six hundred and fifty dollars, and that would be paid through Title IV grant funds as well. Next, TESL Trainers to present two SIUP Institute Professional Development Sessions to district teachers, April seventh through eighth of this year, at a cost, total cost not to exceed eighty-four hundred dollars, including travel, and this would be paid through Title III grant funds. Next, Summer Courses. The Curriculum Committee recommends approval of the following Two Thousand Twenty-Five Summer Courses. First, District Financial Literacy Course, at a cost of three hundred and fifty dollars per student. Upon successful completion, students will receive two and a half credits. Introduction to Discreet Math, at a cost of five hundred dollars per student, upon successful completion, also will receive two and a half credits. Introduction to Data Science, costs again, five hundred dollars, and when completed, two and a half credits will be received, successful completion. Discreet Math Part II, five hundred dollars per student, and two and a half credits when successfully completed. District Marine Science Course, five hundred dollars, two and a half credits upon successful completion for students, five hundred dollars per student. And then the District Asian American and Pacific Islander Studies Course, at a cost of five hundred dollars per student, and again, two and a half credits received after successful completion. Next, the Curriculum Committee recommends approval for Apex Learning to provide an online platform to host the Financial Literacy Summer Course, at a cost not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five dollars per student. Next, we have a donation, and the Curriculum Committee recommends approval to accept one Yamaha trombone from Ross Chapman, a former student of WWP, for the use, for use by the district's music department. And then we have non, oh yes, non-public technology expenditure. The Curriculum Committee recommends approval of this year, the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, for NJ Non-Public School Technology Aid Initiative to French American School of Princeton, for five thousand twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And then we have travel recommendation for one district science teacher to present at the National Science Conference in Philadelphia on March twenty-ninth. The cost of that trip to not exceed four hundred and twenty dollars, including travel, and that is partially paid through contractual funds. And last but not least, we have a tentative list of dates for the Curriculum Instruction Committee to meet for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, which is listed on the agenda. The next meeting for our committee will be February eighteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Loy. Do we have any questions? Now, we'll move on to the Finance Committee report. Louisa?
Great. Thank you. So the Finance Committee started off by reviewing the monthly financial reports. The administration affirmed that no major accounts are over expended, and that sufficient funds are available to complete the year. The committee reviewed the following motions on the agenda for tonight's meeting for approval: to award and reject proposals for community ed enrichment programs; to approve the disposal of obsolete equipment; to award transportation quotes to and from school; to approve staff professional development travel and expenses. Next, staff reported that we are still awaiting final contracts for the Energy Savings Improvement Program and the Power Purchase Agreement. The energy conservation measures, which are the projects designed to save money, are currently under review and verification by a third party. The New Jersey Department of Clean Energy has approved the overall project, including its scope and design. On January fifteenth, a hundred and forty-six solar renewable energy credits were sold at a hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents each, totaling twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Next, staff reported on cafeteria operations. The daily and monthly number of lunches served continues to lag behind last year's levels. However, the number of breakfasts served has increased year over year. The average number of lunches served to students in the free, reduced, and NJ income-eligible categories has risen by thirty-six percent year over year, increasing from three hundred and thirty-seven students to four hundred and sixty students participating. On average, Southwest Food Service Excellence is serving two hundred and twenty-three fewer lunches per day compared to last year in the elementary schools. However, they are serving an average of thirty-two more breakfasts per day, with eighty-one percent of those breakfasts provided to students designated as free, reduced, and NJ income-eligible. They are still facing staffing challenges. In December and January, five new staff members were hired, while three current employees resigned. Additionally, students enrolled in the Scent Hugger Packing Program received a twenty-five-dollar gift card for the winter break. Next, staff reported that work on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget is ongoing. The state has released the FY two thousand twenty-six budget calendar, which aligns with our previously established meeting and submission dates. A district calendar highlighting progress to date was shared with the committee members. The committee discussed transportation earlier in the meeting. Proposed dates for monthly committee meetings were presented to the committee. And in other business, the committee reviewed the facilities use rates and discussed the district staffing requirements for events. The committee will next meet on Tuesday, February eighteenth. On a personal note, I would just like to say that when I was a child going to school, Lunar New Year was not a school holiday. And as a result, my family had very limited celebrations of Lunar New Year. And when my kids attended the WWP schools, they went to school on Lunar New Year. And I followed the pattern of my childhood, and our Lunar New Year celebrations were modest. So I really appreciate that for West Windsor Plainsboro kids now, they do have the day off, and having the day off matters.
Thank you, Louisa. We will now move into our voting portion of the agenda. Can I have a motion for administrative items one through seven? Liz and Dana?
I'm forgetting my third all of a sudden. Okay, we'll start with, we'll start with Ms. Chiniera.
Yes, except I abstain from item number-
Yes, except I abstain from item number 5, Policy 7510 and Regulation 7510.
Okay. Okay, and next we have Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Ho.
Yes, I abstain on Policy Number 5, the policy and the regulation.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next we have Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed.
We'll move on to the finance items. Can I get a motion for finance items 1 through 9, plus the blue addendum? Ajunta and Louisa?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes, but I abstain from item 9B.
Okay.
And now, we'll move to the personnel items. Can I get a motion for personnel items 1 and 2, plus five addenda, the green, yellow, tan, peach, and purple? Schwetha and Loy?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes. I just want to acknowledge that we voted on a retirement this evening for Ms. Maryann Mansfield. She is resigning after 21 years of service to the district as an instructional assistant. So, just want to congratulate her on her retirement and thank her for her service to the district.
We're going to vote on the curriculum instruction items now. Can I get a motion for curriculum instruction items 1 through 5? Loy and Schwetha.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Now, we'll move on to the approval of the Board of Ed minutes for December 10th, 2024, for December 17th, 2024, and for January 7th, 2025. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? I abst, oh.
Yeah, I abstain.
I abstain from the December 10th minutes.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Can I get a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes? Liz and Louisa? All those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Yes, I abstain from December.
Okay, and I abstain from the December 10th meetings. Do we have any Board of Liaison reports? Dana?
Hi, everyone, again. As the Vice President of the Mercer County School Board Association, I would like to give an update on Mercer County School Board Association's recent and future activities. This past Thursday, January 23rd, the county association had its virtual winter meeting. The topic was "An Introduction to Artificial Intelligence in an Educational Environment." We hosted a dynamic speaker, Dr. Derek Tranquina. He's the Director of Monmouth Ocean Education Services Commission, and he conducts professional development workshops around the state on artificial intelligence and how it can be used and managed in school districts. Next, on March 20th, West Windsor Plainsboro will be the proud host for the second year of the Mercer County School Board Association's Unsung Hero Ceremony, which will be at 6:00 at West Windsor Plainsboro High School South Theater. The student honries for the Mercer County School Board Association 2025 Unsung Heroes' recognition will be students who make outstanding contributions to their schools and communities but are often overlooked by other traditional student recognition programs. The ceremony promises to be a memorable occasion filled with inspiration, recognition, and the company of students, in the company of students and their families, faculty, and some school board members. And the final Mercer County School Board Association meeting of the year will be on May 12th at 6:00. It's hybrid, actually, they're all hybrid except for the one in person in March, and the January and February meetings are always virtual. Featuring, that meeting will be the Spring Celebrations Dinner and the recognition of the County Teacher of the Year, and that will be at Lawrence High School. Thanks.
Thank you, Dana. Any more reports? Liz?
Thank you. Just wanted to mention that the Hawk PTA held a bingo night recently, and from all the photos and everything, you can see that it was really a fun, interactive event. Great way to bring parents and the school community together. Also, wanted to mention that Attitudes in Reverse is holding its 2025 Air T-shirt Design Contest open for students. Attitudes in Reverse is a local community group that is devoted to helping especially youth to be aware of mental health and wellness needs and how to ask for help for themselves and those who need it. Also, wanted to acknowledge that during MLK Day of Service, that the Send Hunger Packing Organization with the West Windsor Human Relations Group jointly hosted an event, very well-attended, very good speakers, and appreciated the presence of students from our community, both Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, who participated help. So, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Do we have any new business? Now, we move to the second opportunity for public comments. The Board invites comments from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 15 minutes. Do we have anybody for public comment? Seeing none, I close the public comment section. And now, I'll move to adjourn this meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Loy and Ajunta? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.